Okay, let's get started, please. Welcome to the July 26, 2022, meeting of the Planning, Escondido Planning Commission. Call to order and stand. Excellent, please. I'm going to do roll call.
Chair Barbe.
Present.
Commissioner Barber. Commissioner Dome is not present. Commissioner Macaro is not present. Vice Chair Paul.
Here, present.
Commissioner Spear is not present, and Commissioner Wyler.
Here.
All right. So hopefully they'll come in as we get started. So we have no written communications, no oral communications, and no public hearings, is my understanding, so we'll leap right to current business.
Could we also start with the minutes from last week?
Oh, I'm so sorry. See, I knew I'd blow it. Minutes. Anybody have questions or comments or corrections to the minutes, commissioners? Look, okay, all right. A motion to approve. I hereby make a motion to approve the minutes from July 12.
Second.
Commissioner Barber, seconds, okay.
Chair Barbe.
Prove. All right.
Commissioner Barber.
Approve.
Vice Chair Paul.
Yes, approve.
And Commissioner Wyler.
Yes.
Vote is four, two, zero, two, approve.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to current business. Ms. Maroney, so I understand you're going to give us a presentation this evening?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair Barbe, planning commissioners. My name is Veronica Maroney, Senior Planner, and I am here to provide you some information and an update to our 2022 General Plan Amendment work effort, which is, again, to update our safety element, also known as the Community Protection Chapter, and creation of a new environmental justice element. And specifically today, we're just going to be talking about outreach and announcing a few upcoming outreach activities. So just to give some background, the requirement to update the Community Protection Chapter is a requirement of the six-cycle housing element, and the environmental justice element is a requirement because we are updating two general plan elements concurrently. We're referring to the update to the Community Protection Chapter and creation of an environmental justice element as the 2022 General Plan Amendment, so that's the name. And we kicked this process off at the end of 2021. So, again, just providing some background information. What is a general plan? It's the city's blueprint for meeting our long-term vision for the city. It's made up of several chapters that the state refers to as elements. Here at the city, we call them chapters, and that's how they're named in our document. And it's a literal text document with maps and figures, and we provide it online as well as hard copies in the office. And so the state requires that we update the safety element, and they refer to it as the safety element, but here at the city, again, we refer to it as the Community Protection Chapter. And this is going to talk about both man-made and natural hazards. And then, again, what is environmental justice? What is environmental justice, and what does that mean? So the state has a long definition that's provided here, but essentially, it's this idea that certain communities within cities and different jurisdictions have been disproportionately impacted by environmental pollution and environmental burdens as a result of policy, policy at all levels. So, environmental justice communities, what are they? The state refers to them as disadvantaged communities. For our work effort, we're referring to them as environmental justice communities, and that will be clearly articulated in the document's final form. And these are areas that we are mapping out based on income thresholds and pollution burden, and that data is provided by CalEPA. There's a tool called CalEnvironScreen that we utilize, and then we utilize median income thresholds. So why are we conducting outreach and engagement? So we're creating a whole new chapter for our general plan, and then we're updating a chapter, and so part of that is conducting outreach as we're creating policies, objectives, goals, and we need city residents to help us shape those and create those. And we're required to do this outreach as a part of the general plan amendment. So anytime you update a general plan or create a new document related to your general plan, there is a requirement for outreach and engagement. So this is just a graphic of the general steps to get to the final document. Currently, we're at the end of step one and starting to begin on step two. So we've been conducting preliminary engagement primarily through existing events, partnering with different community groups and events that are being held throughout the city to distribute information, inform people about what is going on, getting feedback on what's important to them. And so in the month of August, we'll be starting to hold more formal meetings, at-large workshops that are specifically meant for this work effort. So we'll be providing information to the public, trying to educate on what a general plan is. A lot of people haven't heard of the general plan or know what that is. What is environmental justice? Just trying to get the residents familiar with these concepts. So as we move through this process, there's more competence and ability to provide feedback on what's important to them and their communities. And so in the next, or the upcoming events are at-large outreach, or, excuse me, at-large workshops. The first one is scheduled for Sunday, August 7, from 1:00 to 2:30 p.m., and that's at the East Valley Community Center. And then the second one is that following Thursday, August 11, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Public Library in the Turrentine Room. And we will have translation available at the Thursday, 8:11 meeting. And then in October, we'll be holding open house events, and those will be on October 9, which, again, is a Sunday, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. at Kit Carson Park. And then the second one will be held at Washington Park, the Recreation Building, on Saturday, October 15, from 9:00 to 12:00. And so that's really the intent of this presentation, is to, one, let Planning Commission know where we are in this process, as well as for any public members who maybe listen to our planning commissions after they are recorded or attend this event to know of these upcoming meetings. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Questions? Stand.
Yeah, and I wanted to say that I like what we're doing here in trying to get out to the different communities throughout the city. I think it's very important. I think transparency in what we're doing as a local government is important in getting input from the community as a whole, and I'm sure there's a lot of folks that are out there that either, you know, don't have the time or even the desire to come into this forum, where we're getting out there into the community via this process. So I think it's really good. With that, there was a statement in this, under the Environmental Justice Section, that says that we're going to be looking, or, there's the identifica, and this is, I'm going to read right from here, says, "To start this process, identification and outreach to these communities must occur with integrity and concerted effort by those who have historically upheld processes, programs, and policies that play a role in perpetuating such marginalization." So it raises the question to me, what are the processes and policies and things that have been going on in the city of Escondido that has actually truly been marginalizing certain peoples in our community? And so as a part of this process, are we going to actually identify that so that we can see what those are and make the appropriate changes so that, you know, this isn't occurring? So I think one of the steps that's going forward right now is reaching out to various parts of the community. I get that. But what are the processes and programs and the policies that we have, as a city, been implementing that have marginalized people? Because if we don't identify that, we can't change it. I mean, we can go out and talk to the people, but if we got things that are inherently built in what we have, we got to know that before we can actually change it. So I was really concerned when I saw this, that, wow, what do we have built in? And I don't, I mean, I've been around the city of Escondido for a long time, and yeah, there's discussion and things that have occurred in the past. But I don't know what the policies are that we are marginalizing people where we're at today, in, you know, 2022. So anyway, it's just a comment. I think it's something that we need to think about as we go down this process. That was it. Not really a question, other than my thought.
Well, I'd be interested, actually, in your response, if you have one. I mean, just with respect to how that might be, if you have any ideas about how that might be integrated or considered.
Sure. So, thank you for that comment, Commissioner Wyler. I think that's a great point and part of the intent of the environmental justice element. SB 1000, Senate Bill 1000 definitely speaks to that as well. There are policies that were approved or adopted by past city councils that actually did historically marginalize and specifically targeted certain communities. We discuss that in our housing element, which is required by law. And one of the things that we'll be doing as part of this process as we move forward is reviewing existing policies throughout the general plan and identifying anything that maybe is inconsistent with Senate Bill 1000 or is in support of Senate Bill 1000. So that is a part of this process, looking at the existing general plan policies. Part of the document, we could theoretically look further into other documents as well. So we could have a policy to assess all of our existing, you know, municipal code ordinances to assess for that. That's definitely a possibility. But we will be evaluating existing policies within the general plan.
As a part of that, would it include potential rezoning certain properties? Because as I'm reading through this, you know, food deserts, and I've heard the term, and I know what it is, and I can't just reiterate the actual definition. But, you know, there's certain areas throughout the community where it's a little bit further to walk to get to a grocery store, and, you know, people can't do that. And, you know, for communities, they may not have a car or the ability to actually walk to get food. So is that going to be a part of this as well, identifying maybe these certain areas where, you know, we're kind of lacking certain services?
Sure, great question, yes. So part of the process is mapping where there are potentially communities, areas within the city that have disproportionate burdens, right? Having a food desert, not having access to food is an environmental burden potentially because of the implications it can have with your health, right? If you don't have access to food, healthy food, like fresh produce or Whole Foods, you may be more likely to suffer from obesity or hypertension, chronic illness. So that is a part of this process, and that is being worked on as we speak. But that being said, rezoning isn't necessarily a mechanism that will come out of this. It's certainly possible, based on certain analyses, or there could be the impetus to potentially look at that further down the road, but it's not a guaranteed.
Thank you. I really do appreciate your response. Thank you.
Commissioner Paul?
I'm sorry. You should tell him about the website. You mentioned it very, very briefly in your presentation, but that answers several of his questions.
So actually, if you scan this QR code, it will take you to the General Plan, 2022 General Plan Amendment website, which has a lot of great resources, information on environmental justice, as well as other related topics.
So based on your responses to Commissioner Wyler and the chair, has staff already identified disadvantaged neighborhoods or communities within our city, even though I know the community process has just begun, where the staff and their own research already identified pockets that would be addressed under the environmental justice element?
In short, we have started that preliminary process and identified census tracts within the city that qualify based on state guidance. So the state recommends a process for identifying kind of a base map, a base area of potential communities that could be identified as disadvantaged by meeting that definition. And so how we do that is we look again at the CalEnvironScreen data, which is all pollution burden mixed with certain socioeconomic factors. And then we take into account median household income, and we compare that with 80% of median household income, statewide median household income for each census tract. So for example, if the median statewide income is $80,000, 80% of that, any census tract making 80% or below would qualify as quote-unquote "low income." So we have assessed that spatially and produced those, their draft and preliminary, because at the end of the day, we do want to make sure that the community has input on where these EJ communities actually are, as opposed to just our data that we source from places like Sanjes or from the census. We want to make sure we have lived experiences taken into account in those maps.
Commissioner Paul?
Okay, so I just want to say one more thing that, for those, everybody else present, I went to one of her presentations just a week or so ago, and she does a great job. And there's a website called the EnviroScreen thing, and it's mapping. And you should go there because it will tell you, it'll tell you all the neighborhoods and what's missed, what's deficient in a particular neighborhood by about eight or 10 different categories. I think the food thing is, might even be one of them. I'm not positive.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, interestingly enough, I think we went through this process for the Climate Action Plan. You may recall that map that showed the census tracts that were most, that bear a lot of pollution burden, I believe is the term, right?
Correct. And it's been, it's since been updated. So when the cap was completed, it was CalEnvironScreen version 3.0, and now we're at version 4.0.
Oh, great. So I'm just curious, from your take, is it generally sort of coincide with what you're anticipating for the EJ?
Yes.
In terms of place mapping?
We're taking that into, that's definitely a consideration point, is making sure there's consistency between our cap and our environmental justice element. We don't want different thresholds, right, potentially? So that is being reviewed as a part of the process.
And there are a lot of, there's a lot of data, I mean, there's a lot of strategies and all that kind of thing in there that addresses equity and justice.
Yes.
So that's cool. I mean, it could just one source of information. Yes, I agree with Commissioner Paul as well. I saw you present at the neighborhood meeting the other night, which was really good in terms of an update. Very, very well done. And also, I love the interactive aspect. She ran an interactive thing on having the community or participants vote on various things, which is really good, too. It also assumes everybody has a cellphone, though, which is largely true, I suppose, but maybe not entirely. So I did notice in the materials that you've already done, I mean, as we've just referenced, you've already done some outreach. I'm just wondering if you have any general reflections or thoughts about sort of what you're hearing from the community generally? I would anticipate that environmental justice as a phrase, as a term, would be a huge leap for education right there.
Yes. Great question, Chair Barbe. That is correct. Environmental justice is a concept. Not everyone's familiar with it. Not everyone has heard it. So we are trying to distill that message down to just what are, what's important in your neighborhood based on some topics. We have things like food access, pollution burden. And so I did crunch a few numbers, and so far, we do have an interactive presentation where if you have a smartphone or if you're at your computer, you can join interactively and vote when prompted. But then at meetings or events where there isn't a computer or any sort of digital presentation, we do have physical boards that you can interact with, where you can provide feedback, dot-mocracy or token voting on which topics are important. So we have received 116, you know, people who've contributed feedback on those boards and through the interactive presentations, and the top three concerns are in this order: safe and sanitary housing, pollution burden, and food access.
That's what's coming out of this.
Those are the most important. It's safe and sanitary housing, pollution burden, and food access. And of course, all of those things mean different, are interpreted differently to each person who votes, but it at least allows us to get an idea of where priorities lie.
So, yeah, and I just am very, I think you've updated this PowerPoint, this presentation quite a bit, and it looks like you've got just a really good range of stakeholders, and it's balanced with events as well as individual outreach, and your references are clear, so I just think you're doing a great job. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? I don't believe this requires any sort of motion or vote. This is an update. So thank you very much. Appreciate your, all of your work.
Thank you.
Chair Barbe, if you can, if there's anyone in the public who'd want to speak to this, I don't know, but...
Is there, is there anyone, would you like to speak?
I didn't fill out a speaker slip, but I can.
You did not fill out a speaker thing? That's fine, please, come on down. You can share your thoughts, and then afterwards, you can just write up a little speaker slip and give it to Jessica. That'd be great. If you would please share your name and where you're from. And thank you for coming.
Hello, good evening, commissioners. Thank you, Chair Barbe and other commissioners. My name is Erica Carter, and I work for Vista Community Clinic. But tonight, I'm here on behalf of the Healthy Escondido Coalition. We have been following this process, and I just wanted to speak to all of the outreach that Veronica has been providing out in the community. And it's just really nice to have someone out there who is breaking down these topics in a way that community members can understand, and how something, a process like the General Plan Amendment can actually affect their day-to-day activities. So that's been one piece of it that I have just been very impressed with. Also, the translation piece, I don't know, she did not mention this, and those of you who have not visited the website, but there, the documents have also been translated, which is a large part of what Commissioner Wyler was speaking to, is some of these things, these inaccessible accessibility and things that have been historically, you know, these processes and policies, that's not always something that is available to the community. So definitely appreciate that from a lot of the residents that are in our coalition. I did see that one of the outreach events is going to have translation available. That is another thing that is not always available, and so that is appreciated by the community members that we are in contact with. And then the last piece that I wanted to say was also just the different avenues that this Veronica is bringing about in terms of how to get to the people. You know, we say community engagement, what does it actually mean? A lot of these presentations are done online, but Veronica is actually going to the people, able to engage with the people, and that's really that true definition of what it means to be engaged with the communities, go to where the people are at, because then you're reaching more people. You mentioned it yourself, they're not coming in here, they don't know what's happening in their city. And so throughout this process, it's just really nice to see that someone is out there in the actual community, with the community members, listening to what they're saying and helping them understand what this process means for their city and how it will affect their lives. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate your coming in. Any other thoughts?
So, okay, I just have one more thing to say then. So when the scoring, I was at one of the events, and we did the interactive scoring, and I was very surprised at the safe and sanitary housing, how high up that scored. And I talked to Veronica about it. And that's maybe speaks to my nevity, but I always think that people have control over their environment. And so I was, I was very, very surprised to see people not feeling, you know, safe and in control of where they live. It was very eye-opening for me.
Thank you. Yep, okay. Well, thank you so much, and thank you, Erica, for coming in. And Veronica, great presentation, much appreciated. And I guess we're going to move on now, at this point, to Planning Commission bylaw, I mean, Planning Commission bylaws. Is there going to be, you going to talk about it, Anna?
Yep, yep. Thank you, Chair Barbe. Adam Feinstone, City Planner. So over the last four years, we've been operating under bylaws that were adopted in October of 2018. Since those were adopted and over the course of the last several years, staff has identified some deficiencies and some changes that would be appropriate for the bylaws. Some of them are things just noticed through the, through the course of the meetings over time. Some of them came out of experiences during the pandemic, and some of them were, are things that have been mentioned to staff from, by various commissioners. So there is a list of things that I put in the brief memo there. Issues with regard to the role of the secretary, and there's some language in the, in the bylaws that talk about the secretary being a member of the commission, which is definitely not, not the role of the secretary there. So we'll need to look at that. There's some information that we wanted to address, like the regard to public testimony, and primarily, in this instance, related to allowing longer periods of time for an applicant or project proponent to speak. Typically, they're given the same three minutes that a, that a person from the general public would be given. So in practice, I know that oftentimes, we've done other than that, but on paper, it doesn't differentiate, so that's something we'd want to address. Concerns or questions that have come up over the last, probably since during, through the pandemic, is when this really became a topic that we were seeing is public contact and public communications with the commissioners and how that information is disseminated. There have been times where it's been done inconsistently, and we want to get things and policies in place so that we can make sure that we're distributing information that we might receive in a timely and organized manner and consistently throughout as we move through the future. One item that I know has been discussed with regard to meeting time. The other couple of things, one, and this one was really an issue that kind of, kind of came about through the pandemic, is distribution of agenda packets and agenda materials. Prior to the pandemic, we had been hopping in our cars on Thursday afternoons and driving around and dropping off packets to the commissioners. Well, that came to an end in March of 2020, and since then, we have primarily been doing things all electronic and emailing links to reports commissioners have wanted. We've been able to drop plans in the mail and/or packets in the mail, leave them at the counter, whatever it might be. But I wanted to get something into the bylaws when we move forward, as we amend them, to really provide some consistency and some information on how we would be dealing with that in the future. I think the last time we formally discussed it, it was, hey, let's, you know, we still want hard copy packets with full-size plans. That was 2018, when they were initially adopted. A lot has changed since then. And then the other item that I know that has been of some concern and some discussion amongst myself, our attorney's office, and several of the commissioners also, is agendizing items. Currently, the agenda is set by city staff based on what is on our, on our docket, basically, policy work that's been going on that the commission has advisory role in and/or discretionary projects that are coming before the commission, either for, either for determination decision or for recommendation to council. It's interesting that over the past few years, back, I think in 2017, we did a Get to Yes program where we did a lot of refinements and modifications to our zoning ordinance, and I've talked to a couple of you individually on this, but we did some modifications, amendments to our zoning ordinance that really were, was intended to streamline the process for applicants and for the development community to get their projects moving. Through that, what it did is unintentionally, it took a lot of, a lot of responsibility off of the commission's plate. A lot of the things that had been done at the commission level before are now done either administratively or through the zoning administrator role. So for instance, minor conditional use permits, those are done by the zoning administrator. Variants, as I believe, are zoning administrator level at this point. So there's only a small handful of items that the commission acts upon, that they are the ultimate decision-making body on, subject to appeal, of course. Major conditional use permits and tentative subdivision maps are two of those. A lot of the other projects, there are the larger projects where you would be an advisory role, advisory body to the, I'm sorry, to the city council. So plan developments and amendments to master precise plans, specific plans, zoning code amendments, zone changes, et cetera. Those are all projects and project types that you are advisory to counsel on. So that kind of, that kind of work is sometimes done on behalf of... So, that kind of, that kind of work is sometimes done on behalf of an applicant who's made an application, and it comes before you for, for consideration and recommendation. And sometimes, it's based on policy that, that council has directed staff to be working on and to provide and present. The environmental justice element, safety element, housing element, all that type of work is, is of that time, or of that latter part of it. So, I did want to basically open it up, have a discussion here with the Commission on what they're, what they're seeing in the existing bylaws. I know they were attached to the, to the staff report memo there. So what they're seeing, what ideas or thoughts they have, so that we can prepare some revisions and bring those back to you guys at the next meeting. One thing also to note is that we'll be looking at the City Council's recently adopted rules of procedure. They were amended or readopted in 2021, so September of last year. And we'll be looking at that, making sure that we're consistent with any information that might be relevant, and likely pulling in information from that document that would supplement our existing bylaws, or it may be that we'll be pulling in information from our bylaws to supplement that for our purposes. So format is still to be determined, but the, but there is content in there. And if you'd like to, I will after the meeting, I can send you a link to the City Council ordinance, I'm sorry, resolution, for the record, so that I can get it on there. It's Resolution 2021-156. But I'll get that email out tomorrow with a link to that, to that resolution, and it has the full text of the, of the amended City Council rules of procedure. So with that, I will turn it back over to the Chair to open up, facilitate discussion on the bylaws and potential concerns, considerations, changes, et cetera, that the Commission may want to, want to have staff investigate as we prepare our modifications and revisions. Thank you.
Great, so why don't we just take these one by one, at least the ones that Adam has listed, and if others come up, we can certainly add to them. So let's just take the first one there, the roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission's Secretary. I'm sure Jessica has opinions about that. No, I'm sorry, you have the Secretary. So, I was thinking the clerk. Thoughts? Anything different in this regard? No? I thought, I thought it was pretty reasonable.
And, and it should be noted that these items here are not specifically what, you know, don't stick to what this list is, this is just things that staff has already identified that need to be modified.
Sure, well, I mean, it's a good starting point, and if we have any input for it, we can add to it.
I think that that one is really kind of just a cleanup, but the others are more of the substance, I think.
Right, 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 okay. Public testimony, which would include time for project app, in other words, you're detailing out the amounts of time that would be available to applicants for their present, uh, to ask questions or to present a testimony.
Yeah, it might, it might not be a strict number that we put in there, I don't know at this point. We toyed around with a couple of ideas as far as time, but it's something that would basically entitle a project proponent to time in excess of what a general member of the public would have in order to basically pitch their project, right?
Right.
And also to be available for questions from the Commission.
And I would, I would assume that would be seamless for the council as well, so that would probably follow. Commissioner Paul?
Well, I, you know, I haven't noticed that we've ever cut anybody short. Is that because they only, they know they only have three minutes, so staff puts all their stuff in the staff presentation?
You know, it, it's interesting, I think some of the, some of the larger projects that we come, that we have come through, I'm thinking, a couple of them in the past, it's probably, you know, I can think of two or three in the past five years or so that have been, and applicants prepared and presented a PowerPoint that spends, you know, ten, twelve minutes.
Right, we've never cut them off, right?
Well, we don't, right, like I said, in practice, we don't. We've consistently and historically given that, that opportunity, but to have something on paper that, that goes along with what we've actually been doing, I think is appropriate.
Right, so what do you guys think for what's the time?
Right, so I was gonna suggest that we just say additional time is, is appropriate and determined by the Commission on the spot, kind of thing. Some language to that.
And if I could, what's, is, does City Council have a written time limit for applicants?
Right, that was my point, yes.
Off the top of my head, I don't know, and I will guarantee you, I'm not gonna scan through the resolution that I mentioned and find it quickly enough, so...
No, of course not, but my, my thought, my thought there as well is just why not be consistent with whatever, whatever they do? If that makes sense.
Sure.
All I would comment is, I would hate to restrict any applicant from making their case to us. So anything that avoids restricting their time is something that I favor.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I understand, I think we need to have at least some limit, because they could go on and on and on and on and on. And, and at least this way, it gives them some parameters to go, look, I got, I've got ten minutes, or fifteen minutes, whatever it happens to be. Three seems a little short, especially for these bigger projects that are really complex sometimes. And staff does a fabulous job giving all this information, which I think helps the applicant. But, you know, I, I have seen some applicants kind of go on and on, and I'm thinking to myself, wait a minute, it's already sold, and you keep talking.
Yet a time limit applied, comma, subject to extension of time at the discretion of the Chair?
Chair, exactly, something like that.
Yeah, and I'd be fine with that, if, if the Chair feels, yeah, keep on going wide because it's necessary. I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, so most communities have, have a fixed time limit, but then, they don't restrict the panel from then asking questions and soliciting more, you know, response to particular things. But it, but it prevents the applicant from just droning on, like Stan was saying. So mostly, like, I wanna say fifteen or twenty minutes, most communities have, right?
I, I think that's reasonable, and then if it needs to be extended, of course, we could, for whatever reason. All right?
Whatever the number winds up being, you know, we can, we can put language together for the Commission in the bylaws, in the draft bylaws that we bring back.
Sure.
We'll see what the council, what their processes and procedures are. But we can put it together and have a blank that we can fill in next time when we actually are discussing it and have more info. It'd just be language that kind of says, you know, this amount, or as adjusted by the Commission as necessary. And in addition, when, when we've got these larger projects that applicants are gonna be making us a significant presentation with the Commission, they'll, they'll know what they've got available to present. So, you know, they won't get on the stage not knowing how long they have, right?
Sure, yeah, that's good, good to have that clear. Okay, so, public contact with Commissioners, do you wanna give us a little background on that one? Is that Brown Act issues?
That's not just Brown Act issues, that's, that's, you know, over the course of, and it's really kind of been during the pandemic, we've started getting communication from various members of the public, wanting to, at times, requesting potentially to put information or to put items on the Planning Commission agenda, which is something that's not, that's not their, their right. It's the, basically, the role of the Planning Commission Secretary to set the agenda at this point. We'll get to that discussion as far as, as far as opening that up to an extent, but that would be to the Commissioners, not necessarily to the public. But it's really the way that we receive information that we would be then forwarding to the Commissioners, the Commissioners' ability to send information back to staff and to communicate through staff, or directly with members of the public that may have contacted the Commission as a whole through staff. So, it, it's a variety of items, and a variety of things that really are a goal and our idea is to make sure that we're doing the same thing for the same, you know, every time, for everyone, communicating it to the Commissioners in the same manner. You know, whether it be when we get something, we immediately forward it to all the Commissioners, or when we get things, we package them and send them initially or immediately prior to a meeting, or include them with the following Commission packets, et cetera. Haven't determined what that is yet, but that's, those are the kind of issues and the topics that we wanted to make sure that we are adequately addressing.
So clarify, from my new and befuddled mind, so are we discussing at all if an applicant or a citizen wants to contact an individual Planning Commissioner to lobby for their position?
You know, just as with the, with the City Council, the applicants are more than welcome to contact you individually, they have, they would typically come through staff because your, your email addresses and phone numbers, et cetera, are not, are not published. I think, I mean, they are public record, and I think that at some point, some of them are out there. If an applicant contacts you directly, that's their purview, and that's up to you whether you wanna entertain that, that discussion or not.
Maybe this is a question for the Attorney, but if I am contacted by an applicant or a citizen that has concerns about the project, do I then, or do I have to share that information with other Commissioners, or with the city staff?
Well, you need to be, you need to be careful, I need to question this.
Yes, please.
Okay. Sorry, it's the first time I'm speaking into this. So obviously, you need to be careful in communicating with your fellow Commissioners, because if you, you wanna avoid projecting any sort of decision, or where you're leaning, that sort of thing. But you can, you are allowed to communicate directly with that applicant.
Or citizen.
Or citizen, or anyone.
Yeah, so this came up a couple of years ago, we, we discussed maybe a email address for, a city email address for the Planning Commissioners, so that our public email, our personal email address wouldn't be out there. And if, and if somebody wanted to contact a Planning Commissioner, they could do that. The city wasn't really gung-ho on that option. And we heard, so we heard a lot from staff that said, hey, all the information should funnel through staff. And that way, it's part of the public record, if it, if somebody wants, puts in a public record request, they don't get your emails, they'll get an email from the staff that's passing the information along. I since brought this subject up because my email is one of those that's way out there. And, and, and there's some communication came in, was, wanted to be directed to the Planning Commission, and it wasn't. I mean, I got a copy because the person had my email address, but it wasn't forwarded to the rest of the Commission. It would, the, the response just went back to that person. And, and, and I contacted staff, and I said, hey, I don't, I don't think that that's fair. This person doesn't have any other way of contacting the Planning Commission, and we need to treat everybody fairly. If stuff is gonna go directly through staff, then, then staff shouldn't act as a filter for that information. They should pass it all, pass it all along, and, and let us, let us deal with it, however we would like to. So that's some, some background.
You're educating me so well tonight, I'm gonna start calling you Professor Paul.
Okay, other thoughts on that? Nope? Adam, you have enough to go on on that one? All right. And also, I think we've all gotten a sense of, you know, sort of the Brown Act issues about communicating with each other, so I think that one is, is... Right, I assume that's gonna be elicited again in the, I mean, that'll probably be in there at some point.
I don't know that the bylaws would necessarily address that.
Or it would be separate, that's right, because, yeah.
Well, I mean, the, yeah, the Brown Act kind of controls, but it doesn't necessarily need to, we don't necessarily need to repeat that in the bylaws.
Right.
But if you guys, if, if Commission members do have questions, if you need a refresher on the Brown Act, we do have some resources, you know, we have some memos that kind of go over basics of the Brown Act and that sort of thing, so if you are interested in those materials, let me know, or if you want a little presentation, or, or some other kind of refresher on Brown Act, I'm happy to provide that.
Thanks. Meeting time, that seems to be...
Yeah, I mean, and we've had this discussion in the past.
Commissioner Wyler, perhaps?
Yeah. Well, I, I know that I brought it up, and this is one of the things I wanted to discuss, but, yeah, I, I would like to propose that we move the meeting time up to six o'clock. It's consistent with City Council, and I, I think it would help staff get out of here at a little bit earlier hour, if staff is amenable to that. You know, sometimes I know that just having maybe that extra hour helps staff get prepared for Planning Commission. So I'd kind of like to have the discussion, not only with the Planning Commissioners, but also with staff, and, and get your feedback as to whether or not, you know, meeting at seven o'clock gives you that extra time that is needed, or if it doesn't matter. And then, of course, with, with the rest of the Commission, if six is preferable to seven, or some other time.
Right, I'm just sorry we're missing three of our Commissioners, but that's okay, we still have more.
Well, maybe we just table that one.
Well, and if I may, we're not voting on anything here tonight.
Right.
With, you know, the new bylaws or the revised bylaws, we'll say Planning Commission meetings start at, we can fill in six or seven, whatever it may be. From a staff's perspective, I'll tell you that if we're not ready at seven, we're not gonna be ready at six, so it really doesn't matter on that realm. But, you know, there are, there are benefits to starting an hour earlier. But, again, it is completely the Commission's decision.
Purview, yeah, so do you all have any thoughts? I mean, I'm, I'm fine with a six o'clock, I don't know if other folks, how other folks...
Well, I don't want to be navigating our schedule, especially since I'm new to the Planning Commission. But I, I will comment that the seven o'clock does actually, is actually ideal for me, given what I'm doing vocationally right now in San Diego. The, the time that I get off my employment to my commute gives me an hour for me to prepare, to come, change out of the work clothes and get prepared to come into the Planning Commission meeting, plus I go over my notes, really far, so seven o'clock is preferable to me, but I don't wanna be, you know, responsible for the decision that the majority makes.
And that's, that's fine, I mean, I think that's why we're gonna just keep a blank there. I was just curious to get a sense, at this point, how people are feeling about that.
Right, Dave, and, and again, for background, we had the same discussion two years ago. And, and, and we, and, and my position at the time was, we can move the time, and I would like it earlier myself, too. But if somebody joined the Commission, knowing that it was at seven, and they, and they, and it wasn't gonna be convenient for them, we shouldn't move the time. And so I feel the same way, I'm, I'm all in favor of moving it earlier, but I don't wanna dictate, if somebody joined the Commission, planning on it being at seven, I don't wanna inconvenience them.
And I suspect for Commissioner Don, actually, that might be the case, similar to you finishing up a workday and getting over here, et cetera.
So I usually arrive back in Escondido at six P.M.
Oh, and I, and, and I agree, you know, what, you came on expecting seven o'clock, you planned your whole world to, to be a part of this, and, and be committed for four years because it was the seven o'clock, and it worked with your timeframe. So, you know what, I'd be fine with keeping it at six, you know, I don't wanna disrupt anybody's world either.
All right, so maybe we fill in that blank tentatively. I think we all feel pretty much that same way, yes.
Could we go back to public testimony?
Sure.
One of the things that seems to occur is we get written communication, sometimes two minutes right before, you know, we're sitting down and gonna be discussing a project. I don't have time to, to look at new written communication, two minutes before the hearing, and all of a sudden, it's, it may be very important, and I don't have the time. Now, I don't know if it's state law, or, or local code, or whatever it is, but it sure seems to me like we had, we need to have a cutoff time for written communication. You know, at least twelve hours in advance, I'd prefer twenty-four. So I have a chance to review it and, and give that the weight that it may deserve. Otherwise, the person's gonna have to come up here and, and give their three minutes of their thought process. But sometimes the written communication, it, it comes in, and it's a bit lengthy, and we've had, you know, Jessica read, start reading through it, and, all right, well, three minutes are up, and we're cut off. And there may have been good information that we don't get a chance to re, review, 'cause we just don't have the time. So, you know, that's something that, that I've noticed in the past, and I, I would prefer that this written communication come in with enough time for us to get it, and, and at least read it, as opposed to two minutes right before, right before we meet.
And, and this is one of those items that, I may not have mentioned, but we have seen issues and concerns on this. City Council gets similar things, and they, they are basically read into the record in addition to being provided in writing. Some, and that's the items that come in through the, through the Clerk's office's Public Comments webpage. Planning Commission gets comments through that as well, and those are typically the ones that are read into the record, and oftentimes left on the dais for you as well. But that's, this is another... But that's, this is another one of the issues and, and items that we're looking at as far as how public, uh, public communication, I mean, I guess this kind of bridges both public testimony and communication with commissioners, how that all happens. The, uh, both standard email, emails and information we may receive as staff from the public as well as the, uh, planning commission's, um, public comments site or the clerk's office public comments site. If someone wants to just use that to reach out to us, there's not a requirement that they fill in an agenda item number or, or something like that. So they could just send someone to us and, you know, we would be providing that as written communications with the next council agenda, I'm sorry, commission agenda. Those are the kinds of things that are a little bit nebulous right now. So, so Commissioner Wyler, thank you for mentioning that because that brings that out to, out to light. We'll hash that out as we get the, uh, the bylaws.
Yeah, I've noticed that too. And, and oftentimes, because we frequently don't have too many representatives of the public here, it's oftentimes through those written communications is the only way we get that kind of input. So that would be important, I think, to adjust. Okay. Uh, setting of the agenda. So you want to give us a little bit more context there?
Sure. Over the past year, year and a half since I've been in the role here, I've been contacted by various commissioners asking to have certain things doctored or discussion at planning commission meetings, which right now the, as, as I mentioned earlier, the secretary, i.e. at this point myself, is responsible for creating the agenda. I may have seemed a bit resistant to putting things on the agenda at the request of individual commissioners. And primarily that's for, for two reasons. One is that, uh, the resources we have available. So we, we looking at, if we're gonna go down this road, looking at establishing certain parameters and expectations with regard to, uh, our ability to dedicate any staff time to that kind of work. But, you know, we, on, on the flip side of that, we understand and respect the commission's desire to have conversations in public, in a public forum that because of Brown Act issues cannot be done in, you know, the high stakes. So in the other, the other issue on that also though is just, um, is, is the, uh, I guess fairness, I would say between all the commissioners and everyone having an equal opportunity to provide any type of item for, you know, topic for discussion. The other thing that as I'm talking, as I'm thinking about that comes out of it is that ultimately policy is, is directed by council. So while we have no problem making, figuring out ways to accommodate discussion, I would, I would caution the commission to expect anything to come of those discussions unless it's something that's, that's, uh, that's requested through council, uh, staff. That's kind of where we're leaning towards with the revisions that we're gonna make to address, uh, this kind of thing. But I definitely understand, you know, see the, see the benefit of letting the commission put things on there and, and have that discussion and see what the, you know, if there's any public at those meetings, get their input too, so.
So as secretary, then you would, would it be helpful to set a time in the agenda to talk about agenda, agendizing items? To have some conversation amongst all of us around prioritization and also to include your input on staff time or whether or not it's even feasible to have a conversation about X, Y, or Z?
So those are, those are things that we want to figure out and come up with some recommendations for the commission to consider when we get the bylaws in front of you guys.
Oh, okay.
We don't know that answer yet, we've got some further discussion. I don't know that having, um, I don't want to create a running list of twenty, thirty topics that are, you know, that, oh, is this one important, is that one important? I, I gotta figure out the best way to do that and, and at least come up with some ideas and then present that to you guys.
Well, just as a suggestion, you also might think about using the work plan as a prioritization sort of tool, if you will. I mean, it does have those big ticket items on there. And if there are conversations that we might want to have that are relative to any of those, those items, that might be one way to think about prioritizing, it's just a thought.
So, so maybe we should talk about the latest example.
Yeah.
Um, we were talking about covered parking and we had a very, very limited conversation on, on, um, covered parking. And someone else emailed me and said, hey, Rick, why didn't you bring this up? Yeah, let's talk about covered parking. So I said, Adam, can you put that on the agenda? And he said, uh, I don't know how to do that. So that's why we're having this conversation. And, and sometimes we have, at the end of the meeting, commissioner comments, or someone has said, hey, can we put that on the agenda? And we kind of look around the room and we get a bunch of nods and then it usually ends up on the agenda. And no other way has anything ever ended up on the agenda, right, from the planning commission, except via that method?
Yeah, that is the method, like the green infrastructure conversation at all was sort of an addendum and that was all just generated by discussion.
Yeah, I, I'd like to find a way that we're not discussing the importance of one topic over another in this forum, which is where I think that having certain parameters in place, maybe it's things that are on the work plan, maybe it's someone else, maybe it's, you know, do we go down the list and the chair gets to see some, the vice chair, the next commissioner, you know? How that works, I'm not positive, but that's something that I think that with the attorney's office, I've got to continue to look at and figure out how to have that discussion without biasing the discussion when we're figuring out what that agenda is, right? We can't, we can't dedicate as much time to putting things on the agenda that I think you all would like, I guess is where I'm getting at. Or we would have meetings going until who knows what time, right? But, you know, we'll hash out some ideas and have those in front of you guys at the next meeting for thoughts and considerations. And if we don't wind up adopting them at that moment and you want to continue working out other ideas on how to do it, be good. But I, I think it'd help, be helpful for us to have something in front of you to at least start, uh, thinking about how to do that best.
So you, you get a lot of requests from the commission to add things to the agenda, you're saying?
Not a lot, but I think that once we have a process in place by which commissioners can say, I'd like to place this on the agenda for a discussion.
Then, then you'll get more.
That's my anticipation.
Because I think, yeah, I mean, I've proposed a number of things that just weren't able to do for one reason or another, so it wouldn't surprise me. Any other thoughts or comments on this one? Yeah, I mean, I had actually asked Adam at one point, why couldn't the commissioners go on a field trip to look at, say, for example, the East Valley specific plan and see how it lays out on the ground together, walking the sidewalks and seeing where all these, you know, arena numbers are gonna fit in that tiny little space. Just, just, you know, an opportunity to look at an actual place together was my thought. The logistics of that, I'm sure, are challenging as well as Brown Act issues are huge.
Brown Act would be a big.
Right, but if it was publicly noticed.
Separately go and go look at the place.
Yeah.
That'd be a lot easier. But, but it's not that you couldn't do it, it's just that you have to allow.
In theory, you'd have to publicly notice it, is what Adam told me, and then have, enable the public to go along with you, which would be fine. Of course, we probably wouldn't get too many people, but, anyway, it was just a, a notion, just trying to be creative here about how, ways to increase our understanding. And I know we can't spend all of our time educating ourselves, but there are sometimes elements of that that I think are critical. Okay. Uh, distribution of agenda, we've already covered that, I think.
Yeah, I mean, that, I think is a pretty black and white thing that I just gotta, we gotta dial in exactly how that's done in our, in the bylaws. And I think everyone at this point who's desired to get packets either delivered via mail or come to get them at the, at the public counter at city hall, they are doing that. And I think it's just a matter, at this point, of, of codifier or putting that into the bylaws so that it's not. The last time we, we had been told we were gonna be getting them delivered, you know? I can tell you that, that on a Thursday, as we're dying to get that, the final pieces of a, of a agenda packet together, that's the last thing my staff wants to do at four thirty in the afternoon, go run around town, so.
Of course.
But, uh, you know, so I will say from a staff's perspective, this is one good thing that's come out of the pandemic.
My packet by the mail and I, I receive it on a very timely basis. I, I have no problems receiving that mail.
And, um, what about, uh, the, the possibility of, um, getting full-size plans sometimes for these projects that may be a little more complex? You know, tentative maps, those sort of things, so we can kind of see the details because we're kind of tasked at looking at those sort of things. You know, sometimes eleven by seventeen will work and, and then sometimes they just don't. And then trying to look on a screen.
I agree.
That's a little tough too. So I, I, and, and I don't know, I guess it just boils down to a request, individual request from the planning commissioners to, to get a full-size set. But, you know, I know that these agendas sometimes come up and, and we, we're not knowing when this project comes forth and you're putting, trying to put the packets together and, all right, the applicant now has to submit all these full-size exhibits. So I'm just wondering how that works.
Or, or one idea would be if you had one full set available for commissioner, you know, drive-by look at kind of thing independently. Just that way we don't have to waste tons of trees and yet if, if folks have got the time, they could just simply stop by city hall, take a look at these plans, you know, even ask some questions if somebody's there or not.
That, that's actually a, a very good suggestion. I think, um, at this point, we do not take hard copy plans from our applicants anymore.
Ah, okay.
So we do it all electronically. We often, some of my staff will still say, hey, I want to get a hard copy because, you know, some people are, are, are book versus Kindle, right? And that's fine, but we typically don't get, you know, the twelve sets of, uh, full-size plans anymore. We get maybe one or two and then a PDF on a thumb drive or something. But that's not to say that if it's desired for certain projects to, to get those and have them prepared for the commissioners or at least to have someone at the counter, we can do that.
I think that would be helpful, even, I guess the other alternative would, would be simply for us to welcome the twenty-second screen, go to screens.
Yeah, so when you said paper copies weren't available anymore, the only problem I have is, is right, the size of the screen. But if you have one paper copy available or even if you have a screen at city hall that's six feet by eight feet and you can put the thing on the screen for me in one, I mean, that's okay too.
Understood.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other comments on these bylaws as they stand or, no, we're good to go? All right.
And if, if the commissioners over the course of the next week or so, if you, if you see anything else in the bylaws or after I've emailed you the link to the, to the council resolution, if you see anything there that, that you'd like to provide me some input on, feel free, please email me back or give me a ring, we can do that.
Oh, so thank you for reminding me. I did want to mention that resolution because during those discussions, there was, there was a lot of discussion that the planning commission is governed by different rules. And they tried to, I think, ignore the planning commission when they put that together, if I remember correctly.
So planning, I, I'm not sure that the, that exactly what I'm talking about, this resolution, is what dictates. I, I know exactly, I know what you're saying, that the commission, um, the commissioner, planning commission operates under a different set of legislative rules and regulations than the other commissioners, or the other commissions. I think just the planning commission and the library board of trustees have separate, uh, separate statutory regulations that they operate under. In the planning commission's case, it allows the commission to, to adopt its own rules of order, which we've done in twenty eighteen. I do though want to look at the council's rules and regs as kind of their, the guide because it does make sense to the extent possible to utilize that same, that same structure. But yeah, thank you for that information.
Great, okay, so there are no other oral communications, planning commissioners, do we have any agenda items? Speaking of which, uh, yes.
Yeah, can we put it on the agenda to talk about covered parking?
All right. Adam, do you have that on your list?
I call for a vote.
Do you want to talk more about the why, the where, why is the workforce of that conversation?
Um, well, I don't know if I can talk about something that's not on the agenda, so I want to talk about it. And I don't want to violate the Brown Act, so I wanted to put it on the agenda.
A motion to put it on a future agenda?
My request would be to wait one more meeting until we have these, these bylaws and procedures established. And then, then it's free, it's fair game. If, if that's acceptable, I mean.
Well, we'll wait.
We'll wait.
We'll wait, won't we, Rick?
Wait once, one more time.
Appreciate that.
All right. I brought it up too, sorry about that. So other just thoughts, comments from commissioners generally? I will say that I just recently went to a, a community meeting between the pickleballers and the tennis players out of Mountain View Court the other night and it was quite, sparks were flying and there's, there's, it's, in terms of land use, it's really interesting how there's, there's really a very limited, you know, set of facilities for recreation and how as these new sports evolve, that you get a lot of competition for the same space. And it was a fascinating community engagement process. With no resolution, of course, it was just the community input, as they say.
The ranchers and the farmers should be friends.
Yeah, Joanne Axelrod did a commendable job trying to manage the conversation. Anything else to impose? Okay, thank you very much, everybody.
Before, before you adjourn.
Hi, yo.
If I could actually just take a quick moment, I wanted to introduce two people. First, our principal engineer, Jason Christman, he's sitting in for Owen Tunnel tonight, he did an amazing job, so thank you, Jason. Uh, he'll, he'll be, he'll be in, filling in for Owen when necessary. And then our new director of development services, Andrew Firestein, is in the audience there.
Okay.
So he's started, he's been here all of two days now and we welcome him warmly and glad to have him along. So I'm sure you'll be seeing him again near, in the near future as well.
Well, welcome. We look forward to working with you. Okay. All right, thanks, everyone. Have a great evening. Meeting adjourned.